And we have six items on the agenda, all scheduled. We do have proof of legal publication for each of this evening's matters from Webster Herald. And if you could call roll.
Mr. Newtown.
Here.
Mr. Barone.
Here.
Mr. Stafford.
Here.
Mrs. Bolo.
Here.
Mr. Houser.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
And I believe we only have one administrative matter, which will be the meeting minutes from last meeting. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to provide the United States of America to the Republic, which stands under God, indivisible, liberate, and just for all.
Don, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Is, tonight's the last night before we open backup for a little public participation, correct?
I believe it is.
So that's what it said, right? Okay. All right. I guess we'll move to the first application this evening, which is 552 West Creek Drive. I believe we heard this application during the last meeting, but had to modify the variance slightly, correct?
Do you want the advertisement, I think?
Yeah, the advertisement.
Can we reread it?
So we better reread it.
Okay. 552 West Creek Drive fence, located at 552 West Creek Drive, applicant Andrew Lloyd is requesting an area variance to allow a two-foot side setbacks where ten feet is required, associated with the construction of a six-foot tall privacy fence on a .54 acre parcel having SBL number 064.01-1-68, located in a large lot, single-family residential district, under section 225-77 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
So, we listened to your application, your project, last meeting. It's the only question that I have shown on here now are on, I guess that would be both the north and south lot lines, a two-foot setback for a fence as well.
So, the fence is just a straight line across the back edge of the property?
Okay.
And then what I'm asking is for it to end two feet from the property line?
So, the fence will not be up the sides?
It will not be up the sides, just a straight line, straight across the back of the property, yes, ten feet from the rear line, and then two feet from the sides.
It just looks that way on the survey map, it looks like you're going to extend both sides.
Yeah, I was emailing a copy of that survey map, but I did not submit that one.
Okay. So we'll just have to make sure that's for the east property line. I don't really have any other questions, we discussed this at length, it's really just the ends of the fence. And it's a board. Another sign, same size, shape, and location with a different logo and name.
Okay, thank you. We've seen this before when a building is on a corner of a plaza, where they want it to seem, be seen from two directions. If it's in the middle of the plaza, they can only put the sign on the front. But, when you're on a corner like that, I kind of drove around their parking lot, and when you're pulling off a ridge, it's very obvious to see that one side. A lot of people come in off a five-mile line. And, to the applicant's point, it's frustrating when you drive into a plaza, it's, where is this, where is this office? If there was no sign on the, on the east side, you know, when you're coming off five-mile line, you'd have to drive all the way around to the front of the building to see the sign on the, on the north side. So, it serves a practical purpose.
Well, coming from five-mile line road, that's the one that, you said that?
That's the one I-
Planning board approval?
That's the one you can see.
So that is on the east side?
So, the point is, I guess, the two signs are, serve a practical purpose.
There's a monument sign in that plaza?
There is.
Do you have a sign on that monument sign?
Not a sign, we have our name, is one of the names on that monument.
The plaque.
Correct.
If I could use that.
Good example, somewhat much bigger, would be the LA Fitness.
My fear would be up the internal stores wanting to do the same thing on the north side. That's the only fear I have. Plus, there's a monument sign on Ridge Road, which does advertise all the tenants within that plaza.
I guess I can't really differentiate between Poirot's, that's on the monument sign and has a south and west facing, or Savers in that same plaza that has a west, or has both facing, front and rear. I mean, I've been on this board for ten years, a little hiatus, I think we've granted about thirty of these secondary sign variances, I don't know how we would, this has been here for three years, I understand the point, and we've looked at that in the past, but this isn't the first and it won't be the last on a corner building. And I think the bank right down the road in the next plaza's got both sides too.
Actually, the plaza on Halt Road, most of those tenants want a sign toward the parking lot and a sign toward the expressway, so that people driving by in the expressway could actually see that building.
So Five Below has one front and back, north-south.
Yeah.
And all those down through there.
The thing I'd point out is that the monument that you referenced is actually located just west of the driveway, sorry, just east of the driveway. So, and I don't, I think it's a four inches high lettering on the monument sign. So, it's, you know, again, to, for a westbound vehicle, you know, they're going to encounter that monument just feet after they pass the driveway.
Yeah, I don't think the signs are excessively sized, either, they're just functional, they're just functional, there's nothing flashy about them or anything like that.
There's a lot in that plaza. Most of the businesses at the plaza are restaurant, salon type of things, where, what am I trying to say? You're pulling into the plaza and then you're kind of casually looking to see what's in there. This being, I'll call it a medical type of business, where you're going in for actual therapy, I don't know that I would know that it was there, because there's been so many different things in that end location within the past five to seven years. In the monument sign, while it does list all of the businesses, it's fairly small writing, with a lot of traffic on Ridge Road, and a car wash that's going to go in that front plaza as well, so there's just going to be that much more congestion. This makes it a little bit easier to find a business that's a necessity as opposed to a nicety, if that makes sense?
Correct. Thoughts, Tom?
No, no questions. I agree with Corinne.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to, oh, let's back up. Present of ten YCR, section 617 of the Environmental Code, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. If you could call 872-7011, we will be waiting.
They need to go to planning board also. Yeah, so.
The second one as well needs to go to planning board again, or?
They've received planning board approval for the first one. Technically, they would have to go back for this one, even though it's identical.
It's protocol, that's it.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yep.
All right, looks like we're not going to receive any calls. Don, any thoughts? It seems like you're maybe against this.
I just don't like your establishment impression. I certainly understand the corner building and its location, Ridge Road being the major roadway. There's signage on the monument sign. You know, I see both sides of the issue, whereas, you know, there would be a need for it. I don't know how much the car washes are going to interfere with its view down the road. But, you know, biggest bugaboo is when you're looking for a destination, you're looking for addresses, and you're trying to keep up with traffic, and it's, I know it's difficult, especially at that section of Ridge Road.
I try to avoid it.
I do too.
I'm feeder road guy, I like to take the feeder. Maybe more of them.
All right, anyone care to make a motion or final comments?
Well, let's, let me just run through the standards quickly here. Actually, the request is not out of character, it says in the neighborhood, but to me, all these commercial developments along Ridge Road are the neighborhood. And as Jamie pointed out, we have issued other variances for two signs on a building where it's appropriate to do so. Actually, another one that comes to mind is the one on the corner of Shoe Craft Road and Ridge, some of those, because it's visible from Shoe Craft and Ridge, some of those businesses have signs on the front and back also.
Metro Matros.
So, there's no detriment created nearby properties, the signs are not excessive in size, the benefit's really not achievable by any other method. There's two entrances to the plaza, and I clearly see the advantage to being visible from both entrances when people pull in. The request is not substantial, the signs are the same size and in the same location as the signs that were previously put up. There's no adverse physical or environmental impacts, the difficulty is not self-created, it's just, it's the location of the building, and he's trying to make it as convenient as possible for his patrons. It's not an undesirable change, and as I said, the signs are really just minimal signage, just to serve a purpose, so his patients could find his building, his location easily. So, with that, I'll, anybody have anything to add? So with that, I'll make a motion to grant, it's an area variance, to allow a second fifteen-square-foot building-mounted sign, where only one is permitted at the Village Physical Therapy location located at 803, is that the address, 803A?
803A.
Ridge Road, okay. Okay. Where only one side of it is associated with Village Physical Therapy within Webster Woods Plaza, on a 3.54 acre parcel, having SBL number 079.18-1-69.111, located in an MC medium-intensity commercial district under section 178-7 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Mr. Barone.
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo.
Aye.
Mr. Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. Houser.
Aye.
Mr. Newtown.
Aye.
Okay, few conditions apply, must obtain a signed permit for the new sign now, you've got one for the other, correct?
Correct.
That was in your packet. And, one year meaningful construction, it's expired one year from this evening, I guess the sign's already there, you're just going to replace them, right?
Correct.
Same size. And, sorry, I missed the conversation on the planning board, they do or do not have to go back to planning board. Do you have one more? Planning board approval?
Yep.
Okay. All right, you're all set?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is 927 Blackberry Lane.
927 Blackberry Lane, located at 927 Blackberry Lane, applicant Keystone Custom Decks is requiring an area variance to allow a twenty-eight-foot rear setback where fifty-five feet is required, associated with the replacement of an existing deck with a new covered deck on a .51 acre parcel having SBL number 064.10-1-13, located in an R2 single-family residential district under section 225-10 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening.
If you could say your name, address, and tell us about the project at Blackberry Lane?
Yes, my name is Malin, last name Ash, I'm from Keystone Custom Decks, at 3134 Yoder Hill Road in Cuca Park. I am representing the project at 927 Blackberry Lane, we are constructing, are wanting to construct a covered deck area, replacing an existing wood deck that is currently in its place. Total square footage is 277 square feet.
And that's obviously covered, looks like you've identified that it's going to have screening?
Correct.
It's just a three-season room?
Yes.
So a few things that I noted, it's pretty, fairly wooded behind there, behind the house. This lot shape is highly irregular, and the separation between the houses because of it's blackberry, blackberry's up there and it's curved, and then the other road next to it, so the two run parallel, and then this house is on the curve, so there's significant separation between the backyards, with the backyards of the house, the neighboring house behind them, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes.
Those are the things that I noted.
Where he wants to put the porch at a pinch point in the lot, which reduces that setback, it's just an unusually shaped lot. You're not into that drainage easement at all? It looks awful close, there's a drainage easement on the map.
There is, yes.
Just a short of that, I hope?
Yes.
There's a large deteriorated patio in that area right now, it needs to be replaced, that patio needs to be replaced.
Comments? Questions?
There is nothing that you could add to the back of that house that wouldn't need a variance, just based on that unusual rear lot line. I agree with Jamie's comments, and that the immediately impacted neighbor to the rear is on Whiting Road, and with the wooded area and the distance between the houses, they'll never see it. And it's, it's really just replacing the footprint of what's already there, and won't have an impact to anyone. Even the neighborhood's further to the north is heavily wooded, with a shrub line that won't see it either. And it's not oversized at all.
How large is the room? I'm sorry, two hundred feet? Okay.
Mr. Houser or Stafford?
I agree with Corinne again.
We stop a green one.
It's too agreeable.
Basically, some more or less like a sunroom, but they're proposing screening.
Yeah.
Would be nothing to turn it into a permanent sunroom.
Conditioner.
Yeah.
Three-season.
Correct.
No, I was, is that what you were thinking?
That's, you know, you know, there would be nothing to convert that to a three-season room, rather than just a deck that, you know, that's covered. Would there be any objections to, so it would not be enclosed as a three-season room?
I mean, we're putting down decking, which-
Uh, I mean, we're putting down decking, which has spacing, you know, between each deck porch. I don't know why you would close it in.
Oh, see funny things happen through the years.
Sorry?
So you, so you're not having any objections to that?
They're closing it in? To a three-season room?
That's correct.
Um, no, I mean, it would be possible. Anything's possible. No, but it wouldn't be easy to do.
So it's not the intention of the homeowner?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
We can limit it as a condition at the, uh...
What would the purpose of that be? Just out of curiosity. I mean, if you're worried about an additional expansion on top of the three-season room?
Well, all of a sudden, it becomes a livable space that they'd never come back.
Right, but, but if you're, if the, if the, if the purpose is ultimately, and maybe I'm wrong on this, to prevent it becoming permanently livable and then adding another patio or deck on from there, you could restrict that, but what would, I mean, it sounds unlikely, but I don't understand the utility of the limitation.
We would, the town would probably never see it as far as conversion. So if the applicant wanted to make that in a three-season room, they would need to come back and try this board.
Wouldn't they have to anyway? I mean, I guess...
This way, the record would definitely indicate that.
So you're not, you're not recommending that they be permanently disallowed from doing that?
No. That's correct.
You are not?
Well, I guess any conversion to a three-season room would need to come back in front of this board. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
But wouldn't they have to do that anyway?
I think what Don's, to Don's point, I agree with him. What he's saying is it's, it's an unseeable space because of the tree line. They could easily put a subfloor down and convert that room into a permanent part of the residence without anybody knowing, really. So I just think you wanted to...
But how does this stop that, I guess? I mean, I don't...
It, I think it just covers us saying we recognize there's that possibility and we at least went on record saying it.
That's right, yeah.
Unless we put something in there stating that, you know, it would have to be inspected.
It could be on record as part of the, as part of the minutes, right?
That, what?
That, we had the discussion with the applicant. They understand that this is a proposed covered deck only and that any modifications to that in the future, inclusive of fully enclosing as livable space or a three-season room, would require them to come back.
That's, that, that I, that to me makes sense. My first take on it was that there was a prohibition.
No, that's not the case.
Oh, no?
No.
Okay.
No. So as long as we're on record, that if we understand and you communicate that to the applicant or the homeowner. Right? Okay. Did we do secret? No. Pursuant to NYCR section 617 of the environmental code, I'll make a motion to type for secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. Seeing no one will allow you to call in. That number is 872-7011.
Somebody likes to call. Must be intimidating.
Yeah, I'm tired.
Yeah, yeah. I gave you the calm before the storm.
I can imagine. When I walked on the backyard, you can't see that backyard from anywhere. Not from the houses on the other side, not from the neighbors to the left or the right. It's just like, it's outside the curve. And you can't, you can't even see any of the neighbors, so this addition's going to be pretty much invisible.
Last caller at 872-7011. Anyone care to run through the standards?
I can. The, um, there will be not, will not be a detriment created to nearby properties. As several of the board members have noted, the addition will only be visible when you're in the backyard. The adjacent neighbors will have difficulty seeing it because of the tree line and the spacing of the houses from the Blackberry address to the rear-facing neighbor on Whiting Road. It is not achievable by any other method. Adding a rear deck or a rear sun porch, sun patio can only happen on the rear of the house. It's not out of character in the neighborhood. There's other houses in that area that have rear patios. Some of them are starting to get covered. It's, um, people are just covering their patios now. It's not substantial in that it's covering the patio that's there now, so it's not encroaching any further and it's not encroaching into the drainage easement. The size is actually limited by the location of the drainage easement. No adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. Again, based on its location, it impacts nothing. The difficulty is not self-created. That is a very unique-shaped lot. And based on the location of the rear lot line, anything that's added to the back of this house would require an area variance for a setback. And it's not an undesirable change. Based on the rendition provided by Keystone, it'll be a very attractive addition to the house.
Nicely done.
Any additions, comments, arguments?
I agree with you.
That never happens to me.
I guess you say we're correct, so it's on the record.
Okay.
All right. I will make an, a motion to grant an area variance at 927 Blackberry Lane for the applicant Keystone Custom Decks to allow a 28-foot rear setback where 50 feet is required, associated with the replacement of an existing deck with a new covered deck on a .51 acre parcel, SBL number 064.10-1-13. And conditioned such that if this space is to be enclosed as either living space or a three-season room, the applicant would have to come back before this board.
Yeah, I think that was just part of the record of the meeting minutes, right?
So it's not going to be a condition, just during the conversation?
I don't...
Appropriate permits would be required in order to enclose it any further than it is right now. That's it.
Okay. Second.
Mrs. Volo?
Aye.
Mr. Nuttall?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Stappenbeck?
Aye.
Okay. You've got your variance for the deck. Couple of conditions apply. Must obtain all necessary governmental permits, including a town building permit, and one year meaningful construction is set to expire one year from this evening. Good luck.
Hey, thank you.
Take care.
Hey, Josh, here's a general rule in terms of the, when the applicant has a representative, what, do we make them sign off on any authority in terms of the agency? There is?
It's part of the...
It is? And it is? Oh, he was. But not the owner of the property?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that when we go beyond the scope of the proceeding, like we just did a little bit, that that principal or that agent has the authority of the homeowner to bind the homeowner to that condition that we just placed in there? Yes. Okay. And, and it covers it?
It's as agent for. I would assume, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the authorization
Right.
goes beyond the scope of the application. For example, you know, he just bound the owner to this additional condition. And I just want to make sure. I'd like to just take a look at that authorization.
Shall I read this one now? 648 Apple Grove Circle Fence, located at 648 Apple Grove Circle. Applicant Jason and Kate Valdez are requesting an area variance to allow a six-foot tall privacy fence on the rear lot line where a 10-foot setback is required on a .5 acre parcel having SBL number 064.15-1-38, located in an R2 single-family residential district under section 225-77 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening. I'm Jason. This is my wife Kate Valdez. We have some...
We have some letters of support from our neighbors, and we also have some PowerPoint pictures if you'd like them. Have enough for everybody. Do you want them?
Sure.
Okay.
Can we pass those out?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Thanks, Barry.
Yeah, some good homework. Thank you.
Is it, is it Valdez or Valdez?
Valdez.
Valdez.
Yes.
Valdez, okay.
So yes, as you can see, we have a number of photographs showing our plan that we have, that we've wanted to share with you. So to begin, you want to do...
So we have a pretty open lot. Being on the corner, we are quite visible to a lot of the neighborhood. Even going down some of the side streets, you can see our property and see our patio from quite a distance. So we have, um, off the back end, we would go probably no more than 10 feet on either side of the house and then back toward the property line. What we want to do is do six feet on the proper, closer to the property line than 10 feet because of how the side yard is actually quite a bit smaller than, you know, normal backyards in that neighborhood are. And it'll give us more room for, we have two young boys who have a lot of energy and we need a lot of space back there. And it'll also give us some more privacy than a four-foot fence would allow. We've talked to our surrounding neighbors. We actually have some great neighbors that just moved in next door on the property line between us, what we're talking about. And they're in great support of what we want to do. They're really flexible and they even gave us their support on the letters that we just gave out. So you can kind of see even on the back lot, on the patio facing toward Clem Road and Apple Grove, we also have some great neighbors over there, but you can see, you know, straight through to about three of the yards that are right adjacent to us. So it'll give us quite a bit more privacy. In the end, I included some pictures of other counter, corner lots in the neighborhood who, most of them actually have six-foot fences either close to or on the property line. And they're, you know, they're beautiful fences. They do a really great job of kind of separating the spaces, allowing some privacy to the neighbors. And they're not too interfering into the space. So we are planning on doing a vinyl, probably tan fence, so it kind of blends in with our house and this running area a little bit better.
We also included a survey map there on page four, kind of give you an overhead view of the property and kind of where the fence would sit, so the black line indicates the fence sitting on the property line. And then we kind of have the idea of it being at the edges of the, of the home and shooting it, kind of give us an enclosure, like that image gives you, gives you that idea. And, uh, yeah, I think that's about it. We do have a few intersections that we also did make some notes of around our house, so just to kind of give you an idea of how our lot is spaced out and how we kind of sit on the corner. There's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic. So that's what we thought would be, um, would be good for our plan, to have a, have a fence like that, to kind of give us some privacy and I guess safety for our family when we're back there. That's about it, yeah.
Thank you. So here's my initial thoughts. We typically do not grant six-foot fences on the property line. That's been a position for a long time. You know, there was a vision for the town of Webster to be more of an open concept and fencing everything in with six-foot high fences. That starts precedent in the neighborhood. I know we've granted a few fence variances in this neighborhood, and they certainly weren't six-foot. They might have been five-foot, three feet off the line or something. But the ones that I do know, we've granted over the years, one is for a special needs good. One was for police training dogs. One was for a significant grading differential, meaning that this is highly elevated here. It was impactful to nobody. And one, the situation that we had the very first application tonight has happened a handful of times where they want to put just a six-foot high fence on a back property line and the ends of it don't meet the setback requirement of 10 feet, which is very insignificant. The rest of the fence sits 10 feet off the property line. This is, is a small yard. Fencing this in, it just does not meet the standards, in my opinion. But that's my initial thoughts.
There are others in the neighborhood with six-foot fence undoubtedly installed without permits, unfortunately. Are you, are you set on a six-foot fence? Would a five-foot fence work?
I guess, I mean, I guess if we had to go in five feet, it wouldn't be too detrimental. I'd rather not decrease the area by a good one-fifth. It's just a pretty... I know, but if I have to go, oh, you mean on the property line, five feet?
Well, even the five-foot fence is supposed to be in five feet from the line.
Right.
But I'm just looking for a compromise that the board could, you know, potentially...
I mean, we considered it, considered it, I mean, even like a little bit of a setback. I think 10 feet would be too much for what we were looking for to do back there. I mean, the biggest thing is, you know, when our neighbors are right in the back there, we're both, they have young kids, we have young kids. When we're out there playing...
They are very close to us.
They're very close and it's, I feel like we're both kind of in each other's space, especially when we're back there with our kids. They're trying to, you know, especially right now with the pandemic, we're all up in each other's space too much.
I sympathize with your situation. We just have to, we have to, you know, if we make an exception for you, we have to have a reason.
Okay.
And that's why I'm trying to come up with something.
Yeah. Are you, are you talking about five feet on the property line or, I mean, it would be five feet, five feet back, correct?
Actually, when, when they're sitting on their concrete patio, they're only 40 feet from the lot line. It's, it's a shallow, very shallow.
If it's a concrete patio, there's really no setback requires for a concrete patio. So it's just no higher than...
He was just saying it's a shallow backyard. When they're on their patio. He was saying it's only 40 feet to the...
I, I, I'm just saying that because I understand where they're coming from. It's such, such a shallow backyard. And, you know, and the neighbor has a shed and some stuff stacked up right along their lot line, which they're looking at all the time. So I, I'm just, I understand where they're coming from. It does meet our code, but I understand what they're talking about.
I'd definitely, definitely like to see some sort of compromise where either the fence is lowered to a five-foot fence with a three-foot separation from the property line or the six-foot fence is pushed back five feet from the property line.
We could do five feet.
Five feet off the lot line?
I mean, that way we could have a little bit more space on that one side so we can get around and maintain a little bit easier.
We're not that set on being...
Right up, right up on the property line.
Yeah, we're very open to, to compromise.
I, my, my perspective is, I walked around the back of the house and I'm sure you folks did too, but I felt like I was on top of the neighborhood in their backyard. So I understand, I understand why they want the fence for the privacy. I, I would support a five-foot setback. I mean, I don't speak for everybody. I'm just stating my opinion.
That was also my conclusion when I went through the yard and just driving around that corner and the line of sight. I absolutely see the desire and the need for a fence just based on the way, and there's, there is no way, there is no direction that house could be turned where you wouldn't have that same situation. It's just...
It's a corner lot.
It's, it's a small lot. It's a corner lot. it's, it's a small lot. It's a corner lot. And then your backyard is the side yard of, of the house next door. And, and even when you do get along, it's still, it felt like it was much more of a side yard than a rear yard. But, but the maintenance of the backside was a concern for me. So I, if, you know, the applicant could consider five feet with a six-foot fence, I didn't think that was, that that would be out of character. There are a lot of six-foot fences in the neighborhood. Um, I don't know that they're on or off the.
Let's be clear that we've never granted those variances.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying they're on the lot line.
I want to be very clear about that.
That's right, you've got two options.
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with the three-foot, five-foot or the five-foot, six-foot. But I, I want to go on our active state. We've never granted a six, a six-foot fence on the lot line in that neighborhood.
Exactly.
There in non-compliance is probably more than likely.
Fair enough.
It's probably done without permits and it's our own.
Well, and a lot of them are set, you know, they're in side yards and, um, didn't appear to be on the property line. But it's, it's not, it's not an unusual instance in the neighborhood to, to fence in your backyard.
And we have granted variances in that neighborhood. Real funny comments.
No, I'm, I'm.
Don't say it.
I fully agree with you that's not a compromise. Well, I agree with the compromise. It makes sense. I completely understand why they want a fence. I would want a fence driving the neighborhood. Same thing. I can see the reason for it. And I think it's just, what's your decision? What, how are you leaning on the two options that come your way?
I think the, the six-foot, five feet away would be perfect. Um, I don't think the five-foot would be honestly quite tall enough. Um, just based on what we see outside of our window, you know, we're sitting at our dining room table and we're waving to our neighbors when they're coming home. So I think a six-foot would be better, five feet away than, than a shorter fence, for sure.
I am six feet tall. I try to think about that. Like if I, I'll see, you see my head over at five foot.
Stand in here and look at all of it.
What's that show with the neighbor?
For so ten YCR, section six seventeen, any bond material? I'll make a motion for type two secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, this meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. Uh, if you could please call eight-seven-two-seventy-eleven. We'll take your calls. While we're waiting on that, I will note that the applicant has provided.
Five, I believe.
Five, um, letters, uh, in favor of this application. And those addresses are six, oh, that's your address. You have, uh, six fifty, uh, Apple Grove, six forty-nine, Apple Grove, six forty-six Cumberland, which is right there, six fifty-one Cumberland, and six forty-two Cumberland. And we'll put these in with the five. Last call for eight-seven-two-seventy-eleven. If you would like to comment on the application at Apple Grove Circle. Anybody, uh, want to start getting teed up for the, uh, standard? Okay, I'll, I'll close out the public comment portion. We received no calls. Anybody want to have any thoughts on the standards? I can. Is it an undesirable change? No, I think, uh, it's been pointed out, uh, this board has either, has granted, uh, variances for fences in this, um, neighborhood. Um, and also obviously there are other offenses, um, that we may or may not be aware of in the neighborhood. I think, uh, you know, with respect to this property, um, you know, is, is this achievable by another method? Possibly. You could put no fence up, but you'd like some privacy. Uh, it's a very shallow backyard, as was pointed out. And, and I think you've compromised, uh, with the, uh, request from the board to come in five feet, uh, with a six-foot fence instead of six-foot, uh, on the lot line. Is it substantial? Um, yes, as you originally requested, that's six-foot on the lot line, uh, because four foot's allowed, uh, by code. But once again, I'll, I'll come back to the point that you did, uh, compromise and we understand the need and brought that in five feet from the property line. Uh, no adverse environmental or physical impacts. And, uh, this was, uh, self-created. You want a fence. It wasn't allowed at that height by code. With that being said, I will make a motion to grant an area variance at six forty-eight Apple Grove Circle, um, for Jason and Kate Valdez, um, which is to allow a six-foot tall privacy fence at five-foot setback on both the, um, I'm going to reference something at the end, uh, at a five-foot setback, uh, on the rear lot line where ten-foot setback is required on a point-five acre parcel having SBL zero-six-four dot one-five dash one dash thirty-eight located in an R-two single-family residential district under section two-twenty-five dash seventy-seven of the code of the town of Webster. And, um, we did reference the letters of support. And then also, um, well, I, I won't reference this because it's not accurate, but the, uh, the final fence was shown on the lot line on the survey, so.
Should we, should we point out the length of the fence so it doesn't extend further to the south?
Yes, good point. Is there a distance on that?
It says sixty-two feet, but it's as wide as the house, right? It goes from that to end of the house.
It's as wide as the house. It's a sixty-two. Um, we are discussing the possibility of maybe extending that no more than eight feet to support a gate on the side of the house, but it's not going to interfere too much on the front end. It would be more on the other side where.
So you're going to go another eight feet to the south.
At the, at the very most. Um, sorry, probably four feet on the north and eight feet on the south at the most. Um, that's, that was what he discussed, but I don't know exactly how, how long.
How would we do a maximum length of seventy-four feet?
That's fine. Yeah, that's back.
Are you, is that raise any?
Well, technically they're not supposed to go forward to the house on that corner side anyways toward the street.
Right.
Okay, so.
Sound good.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, did we?
The motion's made?
We go with it.
Motion made?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Point off and I.
We, we're done here.
I guess.
Mr., Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Baran?
Aye.
Mrs. Volle?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye. Okay, um, a few conditions apply. It must obtain all necessary governmental permits, including a, uh, fence permit. One year meaningful construction is set to expire one year from this evening. And the requested fence, uh, the, the fence is limited to seventy-four feet in length, um, at sixty, or sixty foot, at five foot s- off the property line, six foot tall fence.
Understood. Yep.
Clear as mud, right? Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Ten ninety-four, Five Mile Line Road, Three Season Room. Located at ten ninety-four, Five Mile Line Road. Applicant Jane Heslop is requesting an area variance to allow a nineteen-foot front setback where sixty feet is required associated with the replacement of an existing enclosed porch with an expanded three-season room on a point-four-zero acre parcel having SBL number zero-seven-nine point one-eight dash one dash five-seven located in an R-three single-family residential district under section two-two-five dash eleven of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening. If you could state your name and address and then describe your project.
My name is Jane Heslop. This is a chronic problem.
She sounds sick.
I'm, um, asking for the variance at ten ninety-four, Five Mile Line Road, Webster. And this is for a three-season sunroom. What else can I tell you?
Looks like you're requesting it to be the width of the front of the house, a hundred and twenty-eight feet. And then you want to come out twelve feet where the existing porch is seven feet, but I think it's got some angles to it, correct?
Yes, that would, uh, that would go away. The current porch would go away because it's deteriorating. I have one letter of, of okay from, from a neighbor.
Uh, you can bring it over here and we'll read it into the record. Thank you. Uh, looks like, uh, there is a letter from Mr. Richard Henry at eleven hundred, Five Mile Line Road.
Correct, yes.
And Mr. Henry says, um, just a note from your neighbors, Bob and Richard. We added a three-season sunroom around seventeen years ago and completely enjoy it. One of the best decisions we ever invested in. We have no concerns or complaints and respect the fact that families in the neighborhood continually make an effort to improve their property. Good luck and enjoy your investment.
Is there anything?
Anything else you'd like to add? Sorry.
I was going to ask you if there's anything that else that I could say that would help out.
I'm sure the board may have a few questions, but I think that's good.
Just, just curious, uh, do you have a huge lot to the south?
Yes.
Have you, did you consider putting a three-season room or sunroom to the south?
We did, but because of the roof line, it, it just wasn't feasible. It would be more of a flat roof than we're looking for a, wouldn't it? And this being the west side, it would also help to, um, stop, it would either be warmer or cooler depending upon the season in the house itself.
And one of, is that arrow, the right-of-way line is, um, right outside thirty-one, is that provide for widening? Or is that right where the pavement is? I couldn't, I couldn't tell. Sometimes, sometimes they make the right-of-way wider for future lanes.
It's thirty-three feet or whatever.
That house is old. It's got a stone foundation. That house has got to probably be a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty years old, I'll bet.
Yeah, unfortunately it does not show as a pavement, does it, under survey?
No.
So the house was built long before the zoning laws. Long before.
If you look at the ten eighty-six, ten ninety, ten ninety-four, eleven hundred, that letter, they're all in alignment with each other. Did you consider any other, uh, width to lessen the impact? Maybe like ten foot as opposed to twelve?
We had talked about that and just felt that from, you know, the, the point of materials, probably the twelve would be best. But don't have an objection to ten.
I assume you're pregnant after take, there's a tree in, right in the front of your yard. You're gonna, is that impacted by it?
It won't be impacted at all. It's, it's far enough back from the tree even.
From a practical perspective, tw- twelve feet is not an exceptionally wide room. I mean, we could squeeze it back to ten, as Jamie suggested, if, if the applicant would agree to it, but, you know, it's, um, it's not, not extravagant by any means.
It isn't, but it's, uh, nineteen feet from the right-of-way line where sixty feet is required. Uh, are there windows to the south side of your house?
Yes, there are.
Okay. So that would interfere with any, uh, view to the south from your existing house if the sunroom was located on the south side?
If it, if it were located on the south side, yes, it would have to be, yeah, there would be a definite, uh, problem there.
You have no sunlight in the house at all. I'm not living there. There would be nothing, no. Because the porch is there, it doesn't even have.
The reason I'm asking is supporting what your, uh, proposed location. I don't want to interfere with any, uh, sunlight coming in from the south side of your house, into your house. And that would be obstructing that.
Yes, it would.
That's to your point, Barry.
And I also think she said it was economically unfeasible, right? Was it, did, did you get a cost with that side, did you say? Or you didn't?
I'm sorry?
Did, did you get a cost estimate to put it on that side?
From the south side or the?
Yeah. It didn't go on that.
No, 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 we had just talked about it and found that it was, seemed to be so very impractical that, uh, the west side was the better one to go to.
We, we made suggestions in the past when people come before the board. And one, one that comes to mind is on Hokel, where they had a huge lot to one side. It was, why don't you put the addition on that side? Minimize your variances. And it turned out beautiful. The job's beautiful. I mean, it's like you looked at it and said, wow, we did something good here. So I, I'm wondering if we asked the applicant to maybe research it a little bit more to see. I mean, sunroom on the south side is perfect. And she's got a huge yard on that side. Now, right now that, that enclosed porch is your entryway to the house, correct?
Uh, no, actually we enter from the rear mostly.
Oh, you go, there's no door in the, in that front?
There is a door, oh, yes.
But you don't use that as your main entry?
Exactly.
Blading and stuff, it's so old. It wasn't, the porch wasn't put on law.
I see.
And so it needs to be replaced in reality. So we thought we'd just replace it better.
I, when I looked at the house, I didn't look at it with an eye to should it be done another way. I, if, if.
I, I agree. I don't, I don't see any issues as far as complex of roof lines, uh, based on the rendering that's submitted. But I, I didn't look at it from the standpoint of what windows are located on the south side of the house that presently exist.
There are two windows on the south side of the house and that's the only light that we have actually coming in the living room.
I understand the porch is dilapidated. They're going to tear it down and put new, new structure there. But, you know, I, I would have looked at it differently had I, had we had this conversation when I, when I looked at the, I would have looked at it and said, this would be a nice place to put, it's easy to do or it's not easy to do and so on. So I, I don't, I, I, personally, and everybody's got their own, I, I'd like to look at it again. I'd like to look at it one more time. I, would, would it hurt you to table for a couple of weeks so I could, I mean, not, maybe the other folks don't feel the way I do, but I'm doing all the talking here.
Well, and I, I didn't look at it from the point of view of locating it in another side of the house. It, it would be coming out five feet further from where it already is. And that is already the, um, as, as you look at the houses in a line, that one's right in line to maybe just a little bit, um, closer to the road than the other houses along that stretch. So I was just concerned that that extra five feet, I, I don't know, would it look out of place or would it, would it not be noticeable as you're driving down the road? It's hard to, hard to judge.
You know, it's one of these things where people driving the road probably won't even notice it.
Okay.
Personally, I, you don't notice things unless you're looking for them.
Exactly.
We're looking at numbers, the codes, the code is a series of numbers. It's got to be this far from this and this far from this and it's done for consistency, but, you know, as far as it being a little closer. it being a little closer to the road, the other ones, I don't think anybody would notice it. The neighbors are in support of it, but I'm just, maybe I'm overthinking it a little bit. In other words, we have an application in front of us, and I'm trying to figure out if it could be better. Maybe I should just act on the application in front of us.
It'd certainly be easier if it was a addition rather than a three-season room. A living space addition, I'd definitely go for the south side of the house.
What are the rooms on the south side of the house?
Oh, we have the living room, and then my bed, my bedroom.
So the living room is on the south side of the house, and if the three-season room was put on the south side of the house, I suppose the takeaway is that during one season, that living room wouldn't be getting very much sunlight.
Very likely not.
Does it come up to the front door?
The porch, the current porch covers up the one window to the south, so that would be, you know, that would be open then, as opposed to being closed.
Does your living room extend to the front of the house?
Pardon me?
Does the living room extend to the front of the house?
No, the living room is like partway, and then there's a kitchen, so it's about...
So your kitchen's in the front of the house?
The kitchen is in the front as well as the living room area, and the porch covers just the living room.
I see.
So it's in, the living room is on the south, it's in the front quarter, the south and the east side, or west side of the house?
It's in the west.
Left of the door, if you were facing the house, left of the front door on the porch is the kitchen?
Well, then you'd actually enter into the actual living room, but the kitchen is immediately to your left.
The wall to the kitchen.
The wall to the kitchen, yeah, excuse me.
But either way, that front porch has to be replaced?
Yes.
It's not usable as an entrance into the house right now.
Well, that's the disadvantage of moving the addition around the side. The porch still needs to be replaced.
So no matter what?
It's dilapidated, yeah.
Something has to happen on the front.
From a practical standpoint, I understand their desire to replace that porch.
Could you look at something a little bit less impactful?
Such as?
Such as shortening the, the, shortening it?
The depth of it? Indeed, is that what you're?
I don't know, just something a little bit different. I understand Don brings up a good point, you put that on the side of the house, and that's where they get their sun, and now you block all that living room space off. There's not a lot of options, they're not going to go off the back of this, they're not going to go off to the driveway side, because that's, the house is heavily loaded to the north, so there's no options there. All those houses are in a line right now to, according to Don's point, the, houses are in a row right now, as we were stating. This is going to push it closer to the road than the others a little bit, so to lessen that impact, if you lessen the depth, might be a little bit more tolerable. There is thirty-three feet plus the fourteen, I know it's from the right-of-way line, but you're still sitting, what, fifty-five feet, ten feet instead of twelve? If she were to move this to the side, they might not have a, you know, they've got to replace that front porch regardless, to your point, right?
Additional expense.
So there's going to be something there, and you're probably, what's the width of that front porch, it's like four foot, if that, four by like eight?
No, it's a little bit bigger than that.
So seven feet?
Seven by thirteen?
Seven by thirteen.
Seven by thirteen, is that?
But it angles in on both sides, right?
It was.
It angles, right? It's flat here, and then it angles back to the house?
No, it's pretty well square-ish.
I almost think they have to go back and think of something less impactful, even along the lines of twenty-four feet and ten feet in depth.
The reason that we chose the twelve foot, to be very honest, is because of the materials included. I mean, you get four-foot by eight-foot materials generally, or, you know, twelve-foot or eight-foot, whatever you're using, and that was the thought behind the twelve foot.
I think what you're hearing from the board is that maybe lessen the impact, you know, both length and width. Something, come to some concession so that we can, if we go through the standards, this is significant, right? Nineteen foot or sixty feet is required, even though you've got the thirty-three foot right-of-way, right, which is basically green space, it's significant. So we're looking to reduce that in terms of the standards that we have to go through to demonstrate whether or not this board could grant a variance for you. So do you want to think that over, or is it something that you, do you want to table this and think about some other options, and come back and give the board your insights? Maybe you looked more at the south side, maybe you look at reducing the size of it?
What would be your suggestion for being a decent sunroom and still being within whatever you need?
Well, it's never going to be in, within what we need, so that's why you're here to get a variance.
Well, that's true, yes.
Do you have a contractor already chosen for this job?
No, I really haven't, but my son-in-law is a contractor.
So I think then, in agreement with the rest of us, the way we're thinking is, we see the, your need for the sunroom, or your desire for the sunroom?
Yes.
But we don't want to set a precedent going down the visual line of the homes in the area and bumping out so far that we've created a new problem for ourselves in the future. So we're just looking for that little bit of compromise where, you know, table it, come back, take a look at it again. You can go home and talk to your son-in-law, discuss about possibly shrinking the footprint of it, and then coming back to us at a later time?
And what would that footprint need to be? Is just pulling it back ten foot enough? Is that okay?
One of your options would be to table this, which means you don't have to reapply, you don't have to pay any more money, you don't have to do anything. Go back, discuss your options with your family?
Well, we discussed with the Ethan Loos, this is how it is.
You'll be first on the meeting, next meeting, because it would be a table item. Do you want to do that? It's only a couple of weeks.
But what we're asking is, so all you want us to do is step back ten feet, is that?
That's one of the options. You know, the board will have to vote on it, but that's one option.
Well, and, so the board can give them guidance, I think dropping it back to ten feet, because on the encroachment, there's only three feet further out than it already is, and I think a couple of the board members mentioned narrowing it so it's not the twenty-eight foot width of the house, but maybe step it in, and I don't know what the right number is to make it look aesthetically pleasing. So it's just not, not bringing the whole house out an additional five feet further than that front step already is. You know, I know the sixty-foot setback isn't going to happen, because there is a house on that section of the street that is at the sixty-foot, so really, the setback is thirty or thirty-one feet, based on that section of the street.
Actually, if they came back two feet on each side, for instance, it would be, still, it's a twenty-five-foot porch, that's a big porch. Narrow, yes, twenty-five feet's a big, it's a big sunroom.
Well, but ten feet's not narrow, from porch point of view, or front room?
We were trying to do the full front, just for heat and cooling purposes.
Could you tell me what you found, you can barely hear you?
I'm sorry?
Lower that microphone.
Here's what I recommend, because we could spin our wheels on this for a long time this evening. My recommendation is table this. The folks on the board will take another look at it with a different set of eyes, what if they reduce the footprint? Mr. Brown is a builder, he will have some ideas on what possibly could do to shorten out, that would make sense, and help us to, as a board, to understand what that footprint reduction, what could look like and make sense, so that we come to some middle ground here, so that's not so significant.
Yeah, because you definitely want to make it aesthetically pleasing, especially if it's going to be on the roadside.
That was a big, yeah.
I understand. But, you know, are there other options open to? Yes, it's the south side of your building, and I think, when I visited it, I didn't even consider that.
I didn't either.
I don't know what other conflicts are out in front of the building, either if we shorten that in width. So let's, I've been making motion to table till next meeting.
We're just traveling, because this is a significant one. We're not in disagreement with what you're trying to accomplish, we just got to find the right balance for the standards, okay? So you're good with tableing to this, it'll be the first meeting in April, which is April, it's got to be this, sorry. It's April.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. April thirteenth?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Hosen made a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The applicant is in agreement. We will take another look at it with a fresh set of eyes, and you'll come back here April thirteenth, same time. You'll be first on the agenda, okay? Thank you for your time. Okay, last application for this evening is Jiffy Lube.
Jiffy Lube, located at eleven sixty-one and eleven seventy-one Ridge Road and nine seventy-four Jackson Road. Applicant Gutenheim Development Services LLC is requesting a use variance and area variances to allow a lot area of thirty-six thousand five hundred thirty-seven square feet, where a minimum of forty-five thousand square feet is required, and a nine-foot south side setback where twenty feet is required, associated with the construction of a three thousand square foot Jiffy Lube auto care shop on a proposed point eight-three acre parcel consisting of existing SBL's numbers zero eight zero point one three dash two dash one, zero eight zero point one three dash two dash two, and zero eight zero point one three dash two dash five two, located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under section two-two-five dash seventeen of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening, pleasure to be here. My name is Betsy Brug, I'm with Wutte Ovi Akilman. Chris Way from Boulder Engineering is here with me tonight. Glad to be here on this application, that's for last, I think. I thought I'd start, we brought some plans, I think you have plans in the materials, but we're here tonight to request a use variance to allow a Jiffy Lube, which is an auto service type use in the MC district, as well as a couple of area variances in connection with the project. Can you hear me okay, this microphone?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Do I need to carry it with me? Okay. So I'm just going to walk over here to the plan. So you're very familiar, I'm sure, with the corner of Ridge Road and Jackson Road. This is the bank over here, we have a strip plaza over here, there's some homes here, there's a house here, a house here, and this is our site. It actually consists of, I think we have a subdivision somewhere on here. It's currently four parcels. There's a corner parcel that has the house and garage here. There's a second parcel that has this house and extends, it's a deep parcel that goes back. There's a commercial parcel here that had a commercial building and another house that are not part of the use variance request, but are part of the re-subdivision. And then there's a house over here at nine seventy-four Jackson Road that's involved in the application, but is being outside of our, I'm sorry, it's this one, outside of our development site. So the plan is to carve out this corner area, about point eight-four acres, for development for a Jiffy Lube, which is an auto-related use. They do oil changes, brakes, a bunch of other, let's see, I want to make sure I get it right. So they do, you know, all types of minor vehicle repair, no heavy repair. Oil changes, tire replacements, alignments, brakes service. While it is an auto use, all of the activity related to the Jiffy Lube occurs inside the building, or is that building here? So we're proposing a three thousand square foot building. It's a very low intensity type of the use. Essentially, if they're successful, they're aiming to have, you know, thirty, thirty-five customers a day, twenty to twenty-five is more typical, and when they open up, they will probably start with significantly less than that until they build up their business. The idea is that customers come in, they drive in, they get their service, and they go on their way. It is a destination, they don't generate significant amounts of traffic. They are an auto-related use, but again, all activity occurs inside the building. The proposal is to do a really nice brick building, consistent with some of the newer development in town, such as the Royal Car Wash, I think the Mux Pizza Pizzeria, I think there's a few other newer brick buildings in the area. Let's see. The planning board took a look at this recently, they saw a concept plan, I believe they sent a letter to the zoning board recommending approval of, they said they were comfortable with use variance, and comfortable that it will not generate a high volume of traffic, it's a low-impact use to the neighborhood, as opposed to some of the previous applications. In terms of the application in front of you, I thought I'd go through the use variance first, that's kind of like the meatier part of the application. I did submit some information to you. The property has a common owner. The property was originally purchased when Roe-Foto opened up in town. He operated from two thousand four to two thousand sixteen in the commercial building. Unfortunately, when Xerox and its executives stopped needing photo finishing and processing, you know, his business went down, and he eventually closed this location. When he acquired the property, he originally thought he was going to be here for a while and possibly expand. So what currently exists is the commercial building and the existing houses. The houses are non-conforming structures, they don't meet code, they are residential-type structures, they're deteriorating, they're in pretty poor condition, they don't meet setback requirements, you know, they're not anything that is consistent with the current zoning and would be very difficult to repurpose. The house at the corner here, they've had a gentleman with a type of repair business, he's basically been using the property rent-free in exchange for paying the electric. He's basically been maintaining the property, because they've had break-ins, I think all the copper's been stolen, you know, all of the, the house is really just not habitable, it's kind of outlived its life. So I think, you know, this project offers an opportunity to really clean up the corner. The, let's see, the package we gave you, or that we submitted, I've included sort of a summary of all of the marketing history of the property. Shortly after Roe moved in, I think there was some interest in the property from Walgreens, they would have, that would have required him to relocate. They were also his largest competitor at the time, that didn't go anywhere. He operated until two thousand sixteen. I kind of gave you a summary, I'd be happy to go through all of it in detail, but I think it's, you know, let me know how much you'd like me to repeat. But it's been listed by, you know, numerous brokers. Caliber Brokerage currently has the listing, and there's a letter from Jake Rivera included in the application, essentially explaining all the interests that existed in the property, kind of the history of the potential uses of the property, you know, the, in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, Fast Track was interested in the property, put the property under contract, they started the approval process, I don't know if this board actually denied them, but they were not well-received at the town, and they eventually terminated the contract.
It was a strip law.
And I know Don may remember if that was a denial.
It was a strip law. I believe there were variances, there were randoms.
I thought she said Fast Track.
Well, Fast Track was two thousand seventeen?
I don't remember the Fast Track.
Yeah, they told me two thousand sixteen, seventeen, I mean, they get that this far.
Probably, I don't really get, did get that, I didn't work through.
Maybe, yeah.
We addressed in two thousand nineteen, I guess the meeting minutes were far, we addressed the, there was a strip plaza proposal, but it encompassed all the sites.
Right, so Fast Track took a look at it, Fast Track was interested. Burn Dairy has, has been interested in it, but they're essentially the same type of use as Fast Track. And given the reception they got on the Fast Track, they did not pursue the Burn Dairy. Jiffy Lube is an auto-type use, but, you know, very different from a gas station. There's no outdoor pumps or activity. There's no large trucks. And then Taylor Construction, Taylor Builders, did put the property under contract for some type of a commercial building that would have been anchored by a medical-type use. That user found another location because there's a tremendous amount of available space. So they found a, a kind of a preferable location, and that contract was terminated. So that is the, kind of the history of the site. Now, the application for the use variance, we're not asking for use variance for all of the owner's property. We're requesting it only specific to the Jiffy Lube and this parcel. The broker's already finding that by marketing and marketing the property with this corner improved with the Jiffy Lube, just cleaning up this corner and having a compatible commercial use, has actually been very helpful in the marketing of the remainder of the properties. So they don't have anything lined up here at the present time, but there is more interest now that they know that the corner is going to be cleaned up. Let's see. Some of the reasons that the property hasn't been successfully marketed, you know, I'm not, I don't have the expertise here, but we do have the letter from, from Caliber really talking about kind of the mix of challenges. There are some challenges. The retailers, the businesses that are looking for sites. This site is not really a, it's not really central enough on Ridge Road to get the, you know, quick-service-type drive-through restaurants, which I think at one point they were encouraged to pursue. So there's not enough traffic here for some of the retailers looking for space. The other issues are just the kind of the redevelopment cost. There's only certain kinds of businesses that are looking to build new construction. There's a lot of available space. And I think Jake has kind of given you a narrative of all of the different businesses that he's approached and that they reached out to. Caliber, I think, is a fairly well-known commercial broker in town. They've been representing the property for the past couple years. They have presented it to numerous national, regional companies. They've presented it to other brokers. They have a, you know, a network of brokers. They've sent flyers out, they've sent emails, they've used Loonnet, they've used some of the other online platforms. I think they've done the ICSC, which is the International Conference of Shopping Centers, which is sort of a marketplace where people go and look for tenants and occupants. They've done really everything that a commercial broker would do to try to find a, you know, a good commercial use for the property. So I think that Jake's done a pretty good job at summarizing the marketing efforts, but I'm, I'm happy to, you know, answer more questions about that. The existing hardship, so the property owner obviously is paying taxes and insurance. I did give you a income and expense statement in your application. I'd be happy to go through that and through those numbers. He does have some mortgages. He's basically losing money. The house, let's see. This building is no longer occupied. I don't even know if the gentleman who maintains it is still doing that. This house is supposed to be a two-family. The second floor is not habitable. The first floor does have an occupant. 974 does have a tenant. It's not included in the application, other than that a portion of the land is included. So, and then his current property over here, which isn't part of the application, does have, this residence does have an occupant. Commercial building, I think, is empty. Let's see. So I think we have tried to, I think we can demonstrate that the applicant cannot generate a reasonable return for permitted uses. There just aren't permitted users out there who are interested in this property. I think they've worked pretty diligently to try to market it. Again, I've given you information dating back to, I think, the first broker that had the listing here was Pyramid back in 2009. I think they had some of the property. Then followed by Magellan, followed by Mission Commercial Realty. In 2015, Hawk Commercial took over, and Caliber Brokerage took over, most recently in 2018. Okay, so the second fact here is whether the hardship related to the property is unique. I think in this case, it is unique. We are, you know, every piece of property actually has some uniqueness. There is some uniqueness to this location. It does not have the traffic volumes to attract the type of users that you might want in the medium-density commercial district. It is a challenging location. It does not have the co-tenancies and the neighboring uses that often businesses are looking for. There are a lot of residential still over here. And while the area becomes more commercial, it, you know, it has more potential, but, you know, it's really a mixed, mixed bag over here in terms of the neighboring uses. It is high-intensity commercial on the opposite side of the street, and it's residential zoning to the south. So it's a very mixed zoning area. And again, the positive new construction being very high, there's just only so many users in the market that are willing to build new construction, and this isn't an optimal location because of the traffic counts. Let's see. The existing structures, again, they are in, in really bad shape. I think that cleaning up the corner would be beneficial and really just bring up the whole neighborhood. They're non-conforming structures. They'd be difficult to repurpose, and I think knocking them down and putting in a modern, code-compliant development really would be beneficial. You know, the Jiffy Lube itself is a 3,000-square-foot building. It is a brick building. All the repair work is done inside the building. They have four or five employees. It's a daytime office-type of the use in terms of, the hours of operation are no greater than, I think, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and maybe less than that on certain days. So it's really a, kind of a good, I think, commercial transitional use for an area that also has nearby residential. The, let's see. Lost my train of thought here. So whether we're going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. I guess we're talking about improving the corner. I think that this project as a whole is going to really upgrade and improve the character of the neighborhood. It's, the use is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It certainly isn't the most intensive, intense use here. The bank has a drive-through. We've got a car wash, Royal Car Wash, that had a use variance. We've got, we don't have any auto use immediately across the street, but there is some not too far down. It's really pretty much a mixed area. We would be cleaning up and reducing the number of curb cuts and driveways. You know, you typically wouldn't have commercial curb cuts this close to the intersection, as I think you probably know. So we're reducing the number of driveways. We're eliminating some of these non-conforming buildings. We're upgrading the site. Other than the variances that we are requesting, and actually, the only one that's really specific to this site is the acreage. This is a little smaller than code allows, but if you look at how the code, the parcel is carved out, it's really carved out to leave this building intact, leave this house intact, and really put the lines where they belong, given the existing conditions and structures on the property. The variance over here that we're requesting over for 974 Jackson Road is really internal to the, to the property. So I think it would be, in terms of the character of the neighborhood, I think that the use we're proposing is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It's a low-intensity use. It's lower intensity than some of the other commercial uses. The quality of the development is also going to help bring up the character of the neighborhood and support the character of the neighborhood by inviting, you know, quality users to the remaining property. The more good, solid uses you have, the more additional businesses are going to want to come into the, into the neighborhood. Let's see. The alleged hardship is not self-created. The hardship is really the result of the existing conditions. We have, you know, pre-existing buildings, pre-existing driveways, and an inability to market the property for permitted uses. As far as the area variances, as I said, we're requesting two area variances, one of which is for the size of the Jiffy Lube parcel, and one of which is for the setback. Let me just move to this plan here. This was the other, this is the other direction. So here is 974 Jackson. So we now have a 9.1-foot setback here where code requires 20. Again, it's internal to the subdivision. And the second variance, as I mentioned, is for the size of the lot. Now, while we do need a variance, I would point out that the development itself of this parcel is completely code-compliant. We are not creating any setback variances. We've got lots of green space. We're not excessive on our parking. We have a really nice-looking building proposed. So there's nothing out of the project itself that creates any non-conformities as far as this parcel. So we think that this is really the appropriate size. You know, you don't want a property line running through another building or running through, you know, somewhere that just isn't appropriate. In respect to the side setback variance, maintaining 974 really provides this kind of a transitional buffer to the residential zoning to the south. So the plan is to leave this house in place. I know that there was a comment, there's some DRC comments, and specifically, there was a comment about that variance and that house. And, um, I don't know if you want me to go through the DRC comments now, or should I hold off? I can speak to this one a little bit.
You might as well continue.
Great, so there was a comment. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it. Concerned about maintaining the 100-foot buffer and recommending that there be a condition on approval that no future variances be granted should this property be redeveloped. I certainly appreciate concerns for what might happen to the property, but I don't think that would be an appropriate condition because the applicant, you know, we don't know what's going to happen here, but whatever does happen here, if they do need a variance, they're going to have to go through this process, and they're going to have to demonstrate that they meet the requirements, the criteria for the granting of the variance, and that's really the appropriate time to consider whether or not the variance, a variance is appropriate. At this point, there's no plan to do anything with the house, other than to leave it here. This setback really has no impact on, on anyone, but keeping the house here, I think, does, you know, benefit the adjacent residential zoning. We also, as Chris had pointed out to me, have a sewer easement through here. So there's really some other issues kind of with this area. So, you know, I don't think that this setback variance really has any impact on, on anyone. Let's see. I think I covered that. I could go through the other area variance criteria. The character of the neighborhood, I don't think the variances are going to have any adverse impact or produce any detrimental impact on any of the nearby properties or character of the neighborhood. If anything, we are trying to preserve kind of the separation from the residential zoning. The variances really will allow really quality development on the corner, but won't have any adverse impact on anyone. This setback variance is internal, as is really the acreage lot variance, lot-size variance for the Jiffy Lube. It also will preserve the opportunities, the maximum opportunities for kind of reuse of the remaining land. So the property owner, again, there's a very good chance that the building, the commercial building will be reused, but if it's not, if somebody comes along with another plan, we're really providing the maximum opportunity to have the best possible use of the remaining property. Whether the benefits stop by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method. We do not believe there, there is no other alternative to the granting of the variances. You know, I think that if we didn't have these variances, we just wouldn't be able to carve out an appropriate development site. Whether the variances are substantial, I don't think they're substantial in nature, impact, or amount. Again, given the location and the physical conditions of the property, the existing structures that we have to work with, the need to have driveways for the new development in appropriate locations. So those are the things that really drive kind of the layout of the, of the plan. Whether, um, whether the proposed variances would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the district or the neighborhood. Again, we're cleaning up the site. I think we're making significant improvements to the physical condition of the property. We are cleaning up some driveway conditions, some non-conforming setbacks, some non-conforming structures. And that, all of that really is an improvement to the existing conditions with a code-compliant development that is, the planning boards looked at it. We're proposing, you know, an attractive new building. It'll have the appropriate landscaping. We're going to improve the safety of the driveways. It's going to be a quality improvement to the corner. And whether the difficulty was self-created, obviously, anybody who chooses to do something, anytime you want to build something, there is an element of self-creation, but it's, the, the hardship really is created by the existing conditions. Again, we're not starting with a big, open piece of land. We have to work with the existing conditions. We have these structures. We can't move them. So we're really working with the location of the houses and the existing conditions to, to lay out this subdivision and this site plan. So I don't, I, I think those are the, the reasons that we need these variances. They really are not self-created. As far as comments, so there were some DRC comments. A couple of them were, let's see, there was a, a comment about corbed, sorry, concrete island in the Ridge Road driveway that will be corrected when the application is submitted to the planning board. A second comment was about relocating the sign so that it is code-compliant. That also can be done, so that we can, we won't need a variance for that. The third comment had to do with the single-family residence on Jackson Road, and again, the concern for the 100-foot buffer to the residential area to the south, and concerns about, you know, potential for development of, of this area. So I think that it's appropriate to leave that to a future time, since we don't know what's going to be built or done with the remainder of the property. Let's see, county referral comments are attached. There was really nothing in the comments of any significance. There was a letter from a resident opposing the project. It's a resident who lives a fair distance, I think several blocks from the location. Was concerned with 18-wheel delivery trucks and tankers for disposal of used oil. There will be no 18-wheel trucks. It's not the type of truck sizes they get at Jiffy Lube, so that should be a non-issue. They also commented on a small strip plaza or offices that were previously proposed. That proposal, I think she was probably referring to the Taylor proposal, which Taylor canceled the contract and did not move forward with that. They lost the tenant. So I think that those comments, while she expresses some concerns, I don't think those are concerns that really apply to this project. And as I said, I think the only other comments I saw were from the planning board, which supported the granting of the variances. And I think you have that, and, you know, we'd be happy to answer questions, give you more information.
Thank you.
Hope I didn't talk too fast.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The nine-foot setback, it's a side setback. What is it to?
What is it?
The nine foot.
The nine-foot setback?
Yes.
Is being requested. What is it to?
Uh, it is right here, Don. It is the two-story house. It is the house at 974 Jackson Road. So it is the setback from that house to the property line that's being created.
Right, but what, I'm starting.
It's on the side to the south.
But what, to what though? It's the setback for?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, they've created a lot line.
To the, to the lot line? For MC to, but that's still the same district.
Well, yeah, but they're creating.
They've created a lot line which is nine feet.
Yeah, that's a little confusing, is what I'm sort of saying. There, there should be a couple additional variances.
Oh, you're, so the, so it's to the other lot, I see.
Right. What I was doing, establishing.
Some lots. So it's for the other lot. It's not for the Jiffy Lube lot.
Right. We're just creating.
Right, you're, you're subdividing the two, one and two. I get that, okay. I was thinking that it was on this parcel. Gotcha.
No, no, yes.
So the only, the only impact on this parcel from the area variance for the parcel with the Jiffy Lube is the, the area.
Correct, yes.
What about the, the dumpster enclosure? That looks like it's only two or three feet off the line.
They're, they're supposed to be buffer separations for that.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
But I, I don't see a dimension there.
I, yeah, they're not listed either.
There's a dumpster in the southeast corner.
Yeah. The side buffer should be 20 feet total. The end rear buffer should be 25 feet.
So you're telling us that there's some variances, additional variances that weren't pointed out?
No, that's, that's my opinion.
We did review, I think, we did get a list of, we did get a review back of the, the necessary variances.
Because looking at the separation from the... Because looking at the separation from the apron to Jackson Road to the Jiffy Loop, you got a three-point-five-foot separation from edge of pavement to the property line. There should be a twenty-foot separation there. If you're looking at that as a side, if you're looking at that as a rear, that would be seventy-five feet. I'm, I'm sorry, buffer would be twenty-five feet.
If you bear with me, I have to see if I can track down the email with the review. And I, I don't know how that was done, Josh. I don't know who does the review. Or how that.
Several people.
No, I, I was very confused with the nine-foot and I thought it just dealt with this property. But now then, I'm looking at the remaining properties listed as lot one and then lot two. So you're combining four properties into two lots?
So, yes, I believe this is the subdivision here. So if you... Have my mask on, it's foxes.
I, I, I know, I'm there myself.
So we have the corner parcel right here. This is eleven sixty-one. Then we have nine seventy-four. A portion of the land at nine seventy-four is, is going to be joined in to the, to the corner parcel for Jiffy Loop. The house at eleven seventy-one, that is also, that is also having a lot line change. The staff area is going to be combined with the remainder of nine seventy-four and the remaining holdings of the owner. And that frontage portion is part of the Jiffy Loop parcel. Does that all make sense? Does that help the site development?
Now it does.
Okay.
Now, you establishing these new property lines, why could, but there again, in my opinion, you're, you're going to require a variance the way it's presented at this point in time for a twenty-foot buffer or twenty-five-foot buffer, depending if it's considered side or rear. Why could that not be subdivided so it complies with that?
Why would it not be subdivided to comply with?
The, the necessary buffers. This way you could take care of the area.
So we were not aware that there was a buffer variance was not pointed out at the park. So we're not aware that that was an issue. We can suddenly go back and look at it.
So are you saying once you get a use variance, it's different zoning there?
Well, the big thing is the use variance. The area variances, yeah, come down the road.
That's, that's the reason, if they redo the lands, then you don't want to plug in the variance.
That, that's why I'm.
Then be, yeah, become two different zoning.
Well, not, well, it's still located MC area.
But you eliminate, we could eliminate all of the variances in terms of the area.
Yeah.
So the buffers are still within the MC, not just between the residential and the MC?
This, this whole project falls within the MC zone if I'm not mistaken.
I think that was.
Yes.
Even the property along Jackson Road.
I, I, I think we, we ran into the buffer issue internal.
Just right.
To its south, right across the street. And all those projects, right? With the car wash, with doodle bugs, with everything that's in there.
Okay, so I have a district buffer of a hundred feet that's required between lot one, two, combined lots and the residential property further to the south. And then within the MC, I still have either a buffer of twenty feet if it's a side or twenty-five feet if it's a rear between the properties within the MC, okay.
Okay.
And right now, like I say, I'm finding one dimension, it's three and a half feet to the north along the apron to Jackson Road. So that should be twenty-five, twenty feet or twenty-five feet of landscape area. And Spur, do you want to agree for the board to just undertake the use component tonight? And see if we can tackle that and then?
I, I think we'd like to at least get that done. And if, I, this is new information.
Right, and then give you a chance to address.
Yes, and we are, and I should point out, we are requesting the minimum relief necessary in terms of our, our use variance as well. We're just keeping it to the Jiffy Loop project. Yeah, I guess let's focus, focus on the use variance.
Yeah, yeah, just, just to close out on, on this, the thought about the, the area. What, what's the rationale? Because you, you said that you, the existing lot lines, you're reconfiguring them anyway, right? The two, the first two off of Jackson, along Ridge, that make up the Jiffy Loop parcel. You reconfigured them from their current configuration, correct?
Yeah, essentially.
As exists today. I'm just, why, why can't you get the, the additional four thousand square feet?
Well, I think there's two things. One, the site was designed to meet the needs of Jiffy Loop. And then when you look at code compliance, I think we looked at the current property owner owning this house and what he wanted to do with this house, who wants to keep this house, because that house is.
No, I, I understand that. I think my, my point would be more to the southeast, that section in there.
Into this, into this area?
Right, you could carve out an additional four thousand square feet to meet the area.
Because I think what we want to do is we don't want to hinder the ability to repurpose the remaining property, and we don't know who's going to use it. We don't know who's going to come along. And I think we want, well.
Yeah, I think there's, again, for the record, I'm Chris Spoyier with Boulder Engineering. And this is a, an application where we're making a lot of things better. We're going from four small lots, one of which is eighteen thousand square feet today, right? So they're very small lots, and we're making the situation better by going from four lots to two lots. So even if we proposed half the size of the lot that we did now, it would be a vast, very great improvement from the situation that is out there today. So we had to say, okay, we're definitely making an improvement by going from four lots to two lots. All of the lots, both those lots are coming more in conformance and compliance with code. And then the applicant, the, the remaining landowner is going to be left with a lot that he's going to hopefully be able to somehow realize a return on. So we've taken the least amount of space that we can while increasing the lot size, yet allowing him to have utilization of the most part of his land for future use. Because he's going to have challenges that's been noted here, whether it's a sewer easement that goes back through that property or whether it's the buffers that we were just talking about to the residential district. So we want to make sure that he's afforded the opportunity to have all of the options that he can with those lot sizes. So the lot lines are there for those reasons that we want to save those two structures, making that corner lot much more performance with the code and yet allowing him to develop more in the future. Because we are a very unique use here on this property. So you would be hard-pressed to find a user that is going to take only three thousand square feet, only need twelve parking spaces, I mean, that's, that's small, twelve parking spaces, use no water really, produce no sewer. So we, it's a perfect situation where we can take his small lots, combine them, and, and take the small lot, the corner, and have this use. It's very, it's almost tailor-made for it.
So, but we did not, you know, we're not including the other property in the use variance because there's no, no known user for it. But it is, it has been marketed for quite some time, and the hope is that he will get a user in there after this is approved.
Okay, so I think what we're hearing is you're going to table the area variance portion of your application to the April thirteenth meeting, is that correct?
I guess I need a clarification. Are you telling me we need addition, we do need additional area variances? Will we leave here tonight knowing exactly what we need? Or?
If I had a map, that was the scale, I'd be happy to offer that, too.
Now, buffers out of pavement also.
I'm sorry?
Buffer is out of pavement also, not just building.
That's correct.
And they got the driveway right along the lot line.
That's correct.
I don't even think it's five foot, which would be the residential.
I, I use my map anyway, it looks like it's three-point-five feet.
The buffer can be, it, it's internal to itself. We, we dealt with this next door.
So you're saying this, so where is it, so it, it is a variance or it isn't?
It would require a variance. You don't meet the buffer requirement.
We need to add that.
I, we should probably tackle the use variance because without a use variance, all the rest of it.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, I'm just asking her if she's willing to table it.
Well, if they're requested, I'm, I'm listing additional.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you.
Maybe we give them some direction out of all things.
Would like us to do, we, we're going to have to be back here if we need a buffer. That's why I asked for clarification that we need another variance.
We, we, we're trying to move forward with the use variance. We, I'm asking you if you're willing to accept to table this piece of, that the area variance, so we can move on to the other part.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of tabling the area variance request for this Ridge Road Jiffy Loop project to April thirteenth?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So with respect to the, to the use variance, there are two key documents here. One dated March eighth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Ms. Bull. And the other prepared by Caliber, which is dated January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. And that was prepared by Jacob Rivera, correct? Those address, I, I believe in addition to, there, there is some area variance language in here, but it does address the use variance request, how the property has been marketed. It also addresses the financial statement for two thousand seventeen through two thousand and twenty, documenting that it has lost money consecutively for those four years. And then also on the Caliber document letter, it goes into detail on who this property was marketed to and the reduction in pricing history over the time that it was marketed by Caliber. Prior to Caliber, I understand it was marketed by who?
Uh, I think Hunt, who was in that, Hunt, Magellan, and Pyramid, and.
Which is in your.
Possibly one more, yeah.
March twenty, March eighth.
Yeah.
There is automotive use, that Limelight across the street, Kitty Corner, is that, I don't have the zoning map, is that MC?
Directly across the street.
Kitty Corner, Limelight, it's been three or four things, just to the east and on the south side of Ridge.
Yes, that is MC.
That's MC, which is automotive use, is autozone, is that considered automotive use?
Yes, they receive the variance.
They receive the variance too. And then just south of there in the plaza with, not Sabres, but what's the other one?
The Royal Car Wash.
Royal.
No, the, sorry. Happy Days is in the front, in the back is.
Oh, and Goodwill on the back.
Goodwill, and then there's the Mabus. Is that MC district?
That's MC, they receive, right.
So that's MC, that's an identical use to this, correct? Um, in the MC district. So, anyway, if we proceed with the use variance, I would suggest that we just adopt what's been presented.
Financial statements.
Sorry, those are my points, go ahead, nobody else.
No, I, I think it's a great use of a commercial property, law intensity and especially at that intersection. Knowing the number of applicants that were interested at this location. I believe Ms. Bull indicated fast track and they were discouraged. I believe after that, the board did receive a proposal for a little strip plaza, which variances were granted.
They were, they were all four properties, I think.
Yeah, yes, you're correct. But I think the rule what's being presented and the use that's being presented as a Jiffy Loop, I think be a great use of the property.
Oh, but the traffic, how many, how many vehicles a day do you anticipate? Do you have a?
If they're super successful, they'll have thirty to thirty-five customers a day.
So the Royal Car Wash has probably ten times that a day. That's where the cars is.
An hour.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just guessing, but I, there's always cars lined up. I mean, they have enough stacking room, but it's a lot of traffic.
Right, but definitely much more traffic.
So I'm just trying to make a comparison relative to that use. This is much less impactful as far as traffic generation. Plus, I think with only four bays, you're never releasing four cars all at the same time, so it's very minimal. A lot of, a lot packed onto Jackson. If I need to get oil changed and there's a line, I keep going, I just, I'll go tomorrow. People don't wait in line for an hour for an oil change, that's just the way it is today.
The reconciliation sheet you have of, of income, that's like a sandwich between your letter and Caliber's. What's the income, income?
So there is the, the income. So there is a tenant in the house at Jackson Road, nine seventy-four. There is a tenant on the first floor. There is no income from. So I don't have income to pay the taxes, insurance, expenses.
Your third's been one, is it different to apartments or?
Yeah.
House rentals, yeah.
And that's without any, that's without any mortgage or?
Yes, I did not include the, there are, yeah, doesn't include any mortgage.
So then in addition to the record that the chairman indicated, there's also that reconciliation of, of negative income for the preceding four years?
That coin's been for sale a long time.
This is unlisted, right? Unlisted. For sale and then I see our section six seventeen eighty, and bottom out code, I'll make a motion, this would be an unlisted action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, once again, we're not going to address the area variances requested tonight. That portion's been tabled to the April thirteenth meeting, and we will open it up to public comment. If you have any comments for or against this application, please call eight seven two seventy eleven. It's a waiting game now.
Should I comment?
You know, one of the, one of the neighbors were concerned about large tanker trucks, and you mentioned a eighteen. How you, how do you pick up, what kind of vehicle, what kind of vehicle takes the old oil away and brings the fresh supplies?
They're a straight body trucks, no pivot point in them. And the, the volume isn't that great. But a tractor trailer would be warranted for those types of pickups. And then also the used oil is usually picked up by a dealer specific to the marketplace, which Jiffy Loop is located.
Recycle, they recycle it.
Right, it would be shipped across the state to a central location, it's, it's handled locally.
Let me say, I was over at Ridge Road East today, there's a new one over there, because they used to be on a corner. Now they're not in the corner, but they dramatically changed the facade of those. It's actually a pretty nice-looking building.
Yeah, the planning board seemed pretty satisfied with where we're headed with it. And I think we'll have a nice project, but this board has the ultimate, I think with the use variance, it, it doesn't go anywhere without you, so.
It's a brick, brick building, not that it affects anything?
It will be brick, and that was at the request of the town.
Tony Cachani is a mason. He was his entire life, so he loves brick, yes.
That, that concludes a portion of this meeting. I, I would make a motion, once again, adopting, I don't know if we need to go back through and reiterate all of this. Do you?
If you make that for the record, I don't need to.
Right, so we'll adopt the, once again, I'll repeat this part. We'll adopt the letter from Ms. Bull on March eighth, twenty twenty-one, the financial statement that's including, included therein, and the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one letter from Caliber's Jacob Rivera as the findings for this application. And that being said, I will make a motion to grant an area variance for the Jiffy Loop project located at eleven sixty-one and eleven seventy-one Ridge Road and nine seventy, no, it's not nine seventy-four Jackson Road. We're just dealing with this. We're just dealing with this use variance just to Jiffy Loop.
It does include the portion of the land of 974.
Okay.
And use variance, right? Not area variance?
Sorry, I didn't, I thought I said use, no?
I just want to make sure.
No, I think I said, yeah. Grant a use variance for Jiffy Loop, which is now Lot 1, consisting of property associated with 1161, 1171, and 974 Jackson Road. Correct?
Yes.
From the applicant Guggenheim Development Services LLC. For, let me skim down through this, which Jiffy Loop is an auto care shop on a proposed .83-acre parcel consisting of existing SBL numbers 080.13-2-1, 080.13-2-2, and 080.13-2-52, located in a MC medium-intensity commercial district under Section 225-17 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Did you reference the map? The reason, the only reason I bring it up is because we're not giving use variance to all of 974, just by...
Lot 1 is what I referenced.
Lot 1. And it's .84, not to be nitpicky. I'll make sure it's right.
Second.
.84.
Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Barron?
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo? Aye. Mr. Hazon?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, you have your use variance. We will adjust the area variances in, on April 13.
Do we need to submit anything to add that variance, or will you add it to the legal notice?
We probably will have to re-advertise it, because it wasn't previously included in the advertisement, right?
Yes, we will re-advertise with the whole...
Do you need anything from us, or...
I'll follow up with you.
Okay, yeah, just let us know if you need a letter or if you need to note it on the plan or anything like that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
If you are looking for a buffer variance that's there, should we obtain a letter from our adjacent neighbor that that buffer would be against?
Isn't the buffer to you?
It would be part of this whole project, but we could, for the record.
I think we need it.
I mean, that horse is going to hear my voice. Yeah, I'm going to give a buffer to my employees.
The biggest concern I have is that we can't change the plan too much. That's why I have to say, I think we understand the variance request, but we just need to address those issues.
Thank you. I'm going to go meet with me, myself, and I, and then we'll get back.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.